Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Samamish City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, July 1st, and I’m calling this meeting to order. Could we please have the call the roll?
Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
President.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Roshi Noferel.
Here.
Thank you. And could Councilmember Clark lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And for the land acknowledgement, could Councilmember Gupta help us, please?
We acknowledge that we are in the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded. It’s been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carries. We’re now moving to public comment. Are there some cheat sheets, so I don’t have to guess at people’s names? And did everybody get a chance to sign in who wants to give public comment? Okay, so I’m assuming that this is the list. Thank you. Mary Victor.
My name is Mary Victor. I’ve lived in Samamish 25 years. Thank you for letting us give public comment. So I emailed in something that I presented to the Parks Commission, the Planning Commission, and Sustainability, and it’s on the damaging effects of cul-de-sacs, or coals de sac, which is actually the proper way to pluralize it. And this is, so there’s a 20-page thing, you just need to read like the first three or four pages. It’s a blog, and it’s from 2010, from Seattle, but it has basically people talking about why connectivity and walkability is important, what the problems are. So I sent that to you. And in the blog, they reference a place in Sweden. My husband is Swedish, and so it’s just a nice map. I did a screen capture of it, and you can see it kind of looks almost like a snail shell or a nautical shell. And there’s lots of ways that people can go on bikes and things. They don’t have to go on the big roads. And one of the things that really, like the presentation that staff is doing with Lindsay Channing and the Public Works people is really good, but I see only like roads and avenues and arterials. I’m not seeing connectivity other places. So I dare you, I twice dare you, that maybe there’s one cul-de-sac, or two, or three, or six, in the city where we could start working with people. And so like kids could actually walk to school, like the people who live north of Inglewood could probably walk there in groups or whatever. Maybe there’s some parks that could be gotten to if there was a neighborhood that let people walk through. And I think that those type things are very important. Also, the city owns, there’s also a map, and the green properties are the public stormwater facilities, and the red ones are private. And yes, there’s a lot of privates along the corridor. Now, there are a lot of stormwater facilities that you don’t want people walking in, like the one by McDonald’s. It’s just a trough there with a fence around it. But there are older ones, particularly in the older areas, that they’re dry all year, or they only have a little bit of water, they only have like grassy edges, there aren’t fences around them. The wildlife goes through them, but the wildlife can go through and not get hit by cars. It’s probably a good idea that could pass for people could be put through there. So I really would challenge you to look at doing something. I’ve heard it said at many meetings by councilmember and other people, we have over 750 dead-end cul-de-sacs in the city. And we’re not going to fix them all at one time, but if we start with one, or two, or three, or six in the right places, maybe we can get the connectivity that can reduce traffic, make people more healthy, and make our city a better city. Thank you.
Thank you. I ask you to not clap if possible. Thank you. Don Jaren.
Don Jaren, resident since 1979. There’s a lot of social media conversation about the town center plan, but little actual data presented. For example, there are implications that a denser town center would be a financial burden on the city. Where is the data to support that? Look at the numbers for the first 20 years of our city, and clearly, growth was paying for growth, even with the majority of the development being single-family neighborhoods. With the highest impact fees in the state, we’re talking about some $50 million in transportation and park impact fees alone from a denser town center of 4,000 units. Then there are all the other fees and charges, plus all the roads and sidewalks put in by the developers at their expense. Regarding traffic congestion, show the numbers comparing congestion in Samamish with congestion in Issaquah, Redmond, Bellevue, Kirkland, and yes, even Bothell, all cities on state highways, or should they be called parking lots much of the time. The 2007 Town Center Environmental Impact Statement, traffic projections should be adjusted to take into account actual current data, and it’ll show that much denser town center can be accommodated without our transportation system failing. There are cries for no tall buildings, but no data discussed. Do we agree that taller buildings, there would be less impervious surfaces, more open spaces, environmental advantages, opportunities for public spaces with awesome views here on the plateau, more affordable housing offset by high and upper-level condos, possibly subsidized main-floor retail? Look at the actual data on student generation rates for multifamily projects. Also note declining grade school numbers. Let’s have data-based conversations instead of social media histrionics. Now let’s vision our city at age 50s, just 24 years from now. Do we want a vibrant town center, alive with action even after 9:00 PM, with open spaces connected to 100-some acres of public land here at the top of the plateau? Do we want driverless shuttles circulating throughout the city, connecting to the light rail and adjoining cities? Do we want balanced housing with a plethora of affordable units built along with marketplace units of different sizes and types? And yes, there are seniors who would love to downsize into a view condo, even now. And in 24 years, the city should be largely built out. Let us not simply place black hats on the developers while living comfortably in houses built by developers. At least, I didn’t build my own house. Did you? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sam Parton.
Hello, my name is Sam Parton. I’m here to talk today about the environmental impact of the town center. I would like to start by saying that to claim that some environments are less precious or less deserving of conservation is both unfactual and unscientific. The way Samamish looks at it now, there is some land that is considered environmentally more protected than others, and therefore has to have more of an environmental impact statement made, and some land that is not. And that’s just not scientific. All of these lands, all the trees, all the plants, all the things living underground and the animals that visit them are worthy of conservation and are providing benefits to us right now. From Peter Volleben, you may know him as the Secret Life of Tree Guys, trees of the same species do not compete for resources, they actually help each other. So when you thin out trees, you’re actually making the forest weaker. They’re more susceptible to disease, they’re more susceptible to heat and wind damage, causing, you know, hire anybody house, have a tree fall in their house this last winter? Trees are less likely to do that when they have the support of the people in their vicinity. And when you use heavy machinery in addition, it compacts the soil. Soil compaction prevents roots from growing, so you have stunted plants. It prevents insects and other things from moving underground, also affecting soil. It will destroy the mycelium network that trees use to communicate to each other and share those nutrients. It will also remove air from the soil, which helps organic matter decay faster. So you’ve essentially compacted the soil, producing shallow roots and poor nutrients. When the plants are stunted, the things that rely on them and eat them, including the insects and the cuter things like rabbits and deer, simply disappear too. And of course, none of the larger things, but a lot of people are not super fond of bears, but you know, they’re there, they like blackberries too, they’re kind of like us. So when we’re talking about the trees that we remove and their effects on the environment, it’s more than just what they’re providing shade. They can cool the environment from 10 to 20 degrees by putting out chemicals called terpenes that will actually attract moisture in the air. They provide shelter for so many animals that if you get rid of them, including insects and bats, you will have pest infestations, you will have termites and ants. And the fact that we’re doubling all of this, even though we have empty retail everywhere, there does not need to be more retail space. We have retail space that’s available. And we don’t need to put all of those units there. We can put more affordable housing, more multiple-family housing in more places than just this one spot that is being snuck in under voters’ noses, even though we approved this in 2008. And frankly, I think we need some better environmental stewardship, independent, both of City Hall and City Council, to make sure that these things are going carefully with respect and competency. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carrie Bosworth.
Good evening, city council staff and the public. My name is Carrie Bosworth. I’ve lived here seven years. I’m a resident of Samamish. I’m here tonight to make public comment on the Town Center Amendment that includes studying an increase to 4,000 units. I’ll start off by reading an excerpt from an email I sent the Bellevue City Council. “Hello, City Council of Bellevue. Thank you for providing affordable housing options in your city. In January, my dad, in his late 80s, qualified and moved into a new and safe, affordable unit. I am grateful this option was available. As a resident of Samamish, I am more familiar with the politics of my city and our housing mix. I have no idea how hard or not it was for your city and other advocates in your city to make this possible, so I say thank you. I first heard of the 4,000 units when I was on Planning Commission in a joint meeting with City Council. It sounded like a thoughtful and creative way to help achieve our affordable housing goals. I see this number under consideration not as gridlock or profit. I see it as opportunity for our youth, teachers, emergency personnel, police officers, and to put a literal face to the name my father. While he is in good health, he is prone to infections and falls. I’ve already lived multiple trips to the ER to find him bruised and covered in blood. Last summer, after such an event, we moved him into assisted living and paid four months out of pocket. Thankfully, he returned to good health. Unfortunately, his LTC insurance was denied. Therefore, he found, applied, and got into an affordable unit in Bellevue. It’s not cheap, but, as the name implies, affordable, and just enough space for him to live his life independently and with dignity.” You’ll probably hear from Paul next, and I agree with his analysis that he comes and speaks about week after week, where he talks about meeting internal needs, including market-rate housing, to help diversify our housing mix. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Paul Stickney.
Paul Stickney, Samamish. This comment tonight is in support of the written comment that I turned in today, which is going down a whole new path for your consideration. I’m going to talk about citywide housing imbalance in our community that I refer to as CHI. It’s got four types of housing. Type A is affordable housing from 175,000 to 500,000. Type B, market-rate housing from 500,000 to 1,400,000. C are some condos and townhomes at 1.5 million and above, and D, single-family housing at 1.5 and above. None of the four alternatives in the 2007 Town Center FEIS studied quantified housing factors for local internal needs for either workforce, economic, or demographic housing needs, nor were any internal target numbers set in the EIS for types A, B, or C housing back in 2007. And further, our 2003 comp plan, our 2015 comp plan, and 2024 comp plan did not choose to plan for internal housing need shortages either. This is like running blind relative to types and quantities of housing a community needs over time. The proposed 2025 Town Center Action Amendment so far has not been informed by quantified housing need factors for economic, demographic, or workforce needs within our community for who’s here now. That’s housing types A, B, and C. I suggest this is a profound error. It’s time to pause the alternatives, get the studies for housing needs internally, add some market-rate housing to our comp plan that we need, not for the region, for us, and then assign appropriate amount of that to a town center alternative. So I propose three town center alternatives. One is the no-action alternative that you have now. Another is the 4,000 alternative that was done in 2007, which didn’t quantify any internal needs. And a third is to set a number over 4,000 based on local needs, not based on a whim, based on actual fact. It’s high time for our community to really dig in and figure out the degree our housing is out of balance with economic, demographic, and workforce needs on a citywide scale. Amend our comp plan to begin to alleviate that out-of-balance housing, and then inform a town center action alternative based on those needs and study it also in the EIS. Appreciate the chance to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Yorba.
Hi, I’m Anna Yorba, resident of Samamish and speaking to the town center expansion. As a landscape designer, my first rule is the right plant in the right place. That same idea should guide how we grow our city, careful development that fits our environment. Samamish is not the right place for dense transit-oriented growth. We are geographically isolated, reached by steep, narrow roads without efficient public transit. We are the headwaters of sensitive stream systems that feed Lake Samamish. I support the Town Center Plan and Code amendments, but I urge you not to double the number of dwelling units to 4,000. We voted for a walkable town center with cafes, a central square, and green spaces. We approved enough housing and commercial space to support that vision. Now we’re being asked to double the number of units without the infrastructure to support it. Town center development is not working out as we hoped. The Town Center Plan as adopted has not been realized. Economic projections fell short. And rather than rethinking strategy, we’re trying to build our way out of our problems. The draft SEIS proposes to mitigate traffic impacts in part by intensifying housing density to boost the viability of transit. Funding for transit as a regional growth center is hypothetical. To qualify, we would need dense existing jobs and housing, high-quality transit service, and planning for significant growth. We don’t have any of those. If we aim to meet those criteria, we need a new environmental impact statement, not piecemeal steps that commit us to a path that we can’t reverse. Before we commit to a number, 4,000 units or more, we need to ask those who live here, what kind of city do we want to be? A quiet residential community or a regional growth magnet? Is 4,000 units even enough to meet affordable housing targets? What if it takes 20,000 or more to support appropriate infrastructure? Are we willing to pay that price environmentally, financially, and in the character of our community? Incremental decisions without clear direction waste time, money, and opportunity for thoughtful planning. Responsible development means planning first, then building. That includes green infrastructure, public services, transit, and wildlife corridors. These are not things we can retrofit later. This is our opportunity to lead with vision, community values, and environmental care. Let’s not give that up for short-term solutions with long-term impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Christensen.
My name is Steve Christensen, and I’ve lived in the city for over 38 years. I read the draft Center Code Amendment in SEIS and came away with a positive opinion of the action alternative. The idea behind the GMA was to reduce sprawl, and this plan is an attempt to address that concept, concentrating growth in centers near transit. The town center offerings of retail and cultural opportunities is a major draw, in my view. The document does make very clear, however, that with only 2,000 units presently planned, the vision of a central community hub with all these nice, walkable amenities will not likely come to fruition. Downsizing is another benefit I see. My wife and I live in a house that held seven people, and now only holds the two of us. We’re healthy and desire to age in place, but may need to downsize at some point. My concern and reason I came here tonight is my sense that there is a lot of misinformation being passed around, and I see very little counter-narrative correcting these distortions. I would like to address one of these distortions regarding traffic. As I’m sure you’re aware, the draft SEIS contains five tables with data concerning delays at 52 intersections within the city. The intersections are controlled by signals, stop signs, and roundabouts. Comparing the no-action with the action alternative is revealing. Of the 52 intersections, 24 are controlled with a signal, 7 are two-way stops, 8 are all-way stops, and there are 13 roundabouts. I averaged the worst-case delay by intersection type for the no-action and the differential for the action alternative. These values are what is expected to be the case in 2044. So the signal, the no-action average delay is 21.6 seconds. The average delay increase for the action alternative is 2.1 seconds. The two-way stop, the average delay is 13.9 seconds. The average delay increase for the active alternative is .8 seconds. The all-way stop, the average delay is 10.7 seconds. The average delay increase for the active action alternative is .4 seconds. The roundabout is the no-action average delay is 5.6 seconds, and the increase in that delay for the action alternative would be .2 seconds. By the way, these values do not reflect the city’s desire to reduce vehicle miles traveled by 30% by 2030 and 50% by 2050. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Harper-Christensen.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council. I’m Paula Harper-Christensen, Samamish resident for 38 years. Tonight, I’d like to thank the city for its continued attention to Samamish pride. It helps our residents feel protected while allowing all of us to be seen. Additionally, Mayor Howe, thank you for supporting that we adhere to the rules of not allowing clapping, booing, cheering, or hissing, as these passionate outbursts can also be perceived as intimidation tactics and may discourage the freedom of speech. Following the council rules, it’s Section 3.4.2, looked it up today, can guarantee respectful messaging and proper decorum. We are growing. We cannot stop the growth, nor do we want to. That said, with collaboration and non-embellished communication, we can shape that development. Not everyone wants our needs a single-family home, some who would like to downsize. Today, there are not many options if you do not want a single-family home. Some folks have fought against the town center for so long that maybe the vision has clouded, and they are missing what the fight has cost the city of Samamish. It’s depleted our emergency reserve. The city’s revenue can’t keep up with its costs. Taxes and fees continue to rise. Those funds are insufficient to sustain operations in Samamish. Residents spend their paychecks in surrounding cities, which are thriving, while this city struggles to cover its costs. We know more than, we’ve known for more than 15 years that the city would need to diversify its revenue. Now it’s time to complete what the city began, creating an economic center. And with that, new housing options will follow. Diverse housing options will serve seniors, workforce, young families, and individuals who want a smaller home and yard. There has been erroneous information and gossip that are wholly inappropriate, especially in a city striving to be equitable and inclusive. So that I’m clear tonight, I want this, everyone listening, to know that I was not paid off by a builder to make this statement, nor was anyone else. Council, in gratitude, I look forward to new growth and welcoming the stranger.
Thank you. Richard Johnson.
Richard Johnson, another long-term Samamish resident. I came here tonight to complain about traffic. I know some Tuesdays you may think you’re just not getting paid enough to listen more about traffic. Don and I remember that when Samamish first got started in 1999, there was a contest, what should the city be named? Number three, gridlock. So it’s a long tradition that I’m speaking to. And because sometimes the lead gets buried...
And because sometimes the lead gets buried, as I ramble on, I'd like to say I support the town center with 2,000. I have serious concerns about 4,000, and I want to key on that for traffic. Don mentioned that we should address this with data. Steve gave us some data. I want to invest my money with Steve. He's able to predict the delay at these traffic intersections to one-tenth of a second 20 years from now. I am just a little bit skeptical about that, and actually, I have some relevant data on I had an easy time coming here tonight, and I'll admit that. If you were driving south on East Lake-Samamish Parkway, that was not, from Redmond, that was not your experience by a long shot. The intersection at East Lake-Samamish Parkway and Route 202, it's not our intersection. It's not our problem, right? However, one-third of our peak-hour commuters go through that intersection, one way or the other, every day. What's coming up for that intersection? This month, the city of Redmond announced that they're going to build more of Marymore Village. It's great. It's transit-oriented development. They plan to add, they're not exactly sure, perhaps 6,000 households over the next 20 years. So while we may look forward to that transit center, we have to get there to use it. The transit adoption rate in King County since Sound Transit Link has started is less than 10%. Thousands more people will be driving out of Marymore Village. I can see I'm going way over time. So let me cut to the chase. Redmond predicts that intersection's going to F, two-minute wait. Those of us who've driven there at rush hour will say that's very optimistic, because it's a two-minute wait today. Samamish projections are one minute for that same intersection. Our traffic predictions are not consistent with other traffic predictions in the region, also off by more than a factor of two.
Sorry, I need to cut you there.
Sure.
Thank you.
Evening, council members. I'm Beau Rains, a Samamish resident for 20 years, and I'm the web guy for Save Our Samamish. I'm here to speak about the town center, but I'd like to start by saying, although I disagree with some of your choices, I'll still treat you like one of my neighbors. I know that an immediate response from the council is not part of public comment, so if you don't say anything in response, I won't think that you're mean. I'd just simply like to say hi. The town center vision that was developed with the community input in 2008 and then updated for compliance with the GMA in 2020 is nothing like what you're considering today with the option to allow an additional 2,000 units, bringing it up to 4,000 total housing units. Our existing building codes don't facilitate such growth for a reason. They help provide the guardrails for what and how the envisioned town center will be built. And in order to allow that option you're considering, you're considering code changes. The draft form-based code, it's 210 pages long. Conveniently, it has a summary of changes at the beginning. There are bullet points for each type of change, land use, zoning districts, and other things like that, each sort of in a different section. And each set of bullet points highlights how this code will benefit the developers. It removes rules, makes the code more friendly for developers, reduce uncertainty for applicants, shorten development timelines, reduce development costs. This code change seems to benefit the developers far more than the residents. That's not to say it's all bad for the residents. There's a big emphasis on pedestrian access and walkability. I would love to live in a more walkable city, to go get a coffee and sit in a town square reading a book. That's pretty cool. But I live in Trossix, so what am I supposed to do? Drive to the walkable part of town center? Where am I going to park? Right? We moved to Trossix 20 years ago. We had three elementary-school-aged kids, two big dogs, and it was great. Sure, we have to drive five miles to the closest shopping, but our school was walkable, the yard was big, and there are plenty of kids about. Like the cities, our situation has changed over those 20 years. But I'm not advocating to my HOA that we should build a neighborhood square, put in a pond, and a small bodega and pubs so that I can sit at the end of Trossix Boulevard and watch the sun come up over the cascades. If I want those things, I'll go to where they are, rather than change the surrounding place to fit my current wants and desires. The council should think of the town center the same way. Councils before you came up with a plan, and now you're trying to change the plan, and the city along with it. Maybe try to encourage the growth of a large employer so that our residents have to drive to Redmond, Factory, or South Lake Union, that will work in concert with the town center already as envisioned and bring many of those same benefits. So thank you.
Thank you. Can we switch to online?
Mayor Howe, we did have one person who requested, but I didn't know if there was enough time.
Wow. Sure, we'll do that. Who is it? Is there someone that wanted to speak? Going once?
So my name's Isabel Maracco, and I didn't prepare well. I apologize for that. But I've been listening, in the 10 years I've lived here, I've been listening to very intelligent residents debate the pros and cons of town center, and they've been doing their homework par none. And they were listened to, evidently. Back in 2010, the plan was adopted, the alternative, what was it, alternative three, and this alternative was rejected. Now you're trying to resurrect this alternative. And I've been talking with my neighbors and talking with a lot of people I know in Samamish from other areas other than where I live. Many of them don't even know what's being proposed with the 4,000 units. The people I've talked to are very, very upset about it, and they feel like they don't have a way of expressing it. And they're very adamant against the 4,000 units and the height increase. My belief is, if the city council and the city is seriously concerned and cares about the city residents, they'll put this up for a citywide vote. This is an irreversible decision. Once it's done, it's done. And if you put 4,000 units in with all the negative impacts with the safety, the traffic, the school impact, the environmental impact, it's gone. You know, it's done. And I think the fairest way is to put it forth to a city vote and get the city residents really informed so they know what's going on. And as far as this alternative that's being proposed with 4,000 units, if you go ahead and approve this, you might as well call it what it really is. It's high-density, high-rise housing. Town center, the whole town center concept that was envisioned by the residents 15 years ago is moot. I mean, you're not even, it's not walkable. It's going to be traffic-choking. I can't even, if we put a town square in that the citizens fund, we won't even be able to access it, because there'll be no parking. The only people that are going to access the amenities of this proposal are the people living in these 4,000 units. Thank you. Do the right thing.
Thank you. Can we go to online now, please?
Those who have pre-registered and would like to provide public comment, please raise Paul, when you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Paul Quinn, and I live in Samamish. I'm speaking to you as an individual who cares about fairness and how Samamish solid weighs customers who charge for disposal. Right now, we charge our residents and businesses for disposal based on the size of the container being picked up. The effect of this message is to say we don't really care how much you put in or divert from the landfill. And this approach is completely unfair, is it charges all people based on the size of the container rather than what's in the container. And we know this is wrong, as our water, gas, electricity charges are based on what we use rather than on the size of the wires and pipes connecting us to service. I've emailed this afternoon you handouts. Handout number one shows a graphic of the trend of the monthly cost for garbage disposal for your single-family residences. It continues to go higher and higher. And just recently, as you well know, King County is telling us the disposal charge is passed on to cities' residences and businesses is likely going to double in coming years. What's worse than this trend line is the city doesn't really allow residents or businesses to reduce their cost for disposal by properly diverting materials for recycling and compost. In fact, what the effect is, is the current approach unfairly increases costs for folks who do work hard, sorting recyclables, composting food scraps, by charging them the same as others who are indifferent. And this is unfair, and it can, and it should be changed, and it's by weighing the revenues each customer creates. To begin the change, I recommend a pilot program called Smart Disposal, which will help significantly improve the city's diversion rates. And Smart Disposal is an innovative initiative, it's not a company. Handout number three outlines how Smart Disposal works, and it contains, there's a container weighed at each residence as it's picked up. The system uses postcards mailed to each resident, providing data specific to the resident, including a landfill diversion rate per pickup, and how their use of the utility compares to others in the community. I provide you handout number four to show what that looks like. And this system helps us move from a toss-and-forget mindset towards making better choices. We all know that feedback-through-measurement works, because water, electricity, and gas are metered, helping us to moderate our use. Smart Disposal provides the meters our disposal utility needs. We need this council to provide the urgency and the leadership to drive Smart Disposal forward. So what I recommend today is that the city implement a Smart Disposal proof-of-concept project, and if necessary, partner with another city to split the cost of the project. Metering and reporting to residents what we dispose of at the curb provides fairness to help us abate the increase in cost of disposal. This council should support fair pricing for our disposal utility. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
We have one more pre-registered public commenter. Curtis, when you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, council. Curtis Betzler, Samamish resident and teacher. I was born and raised on the east side. I remember when Pine Lake was mostly summer cabins and a small park, and I-90 ran past Bones Chocolates and through the main drag in North Bend. I'm old. Times change and growth happens. Over 28 years ago, I started teaching at Beaver Lake Middle School. At that time, there was no place for young teachers just starting their careers to rent or buy in Samamish, as this still holds true today. The majority of teachers commute into the area. As young teachers settle down and start families, many leave our school districts to avoid the commute and move to more affordable areas. As a result, we have lost many talented educators, and we will continue to lose them. This will in turn jeopardize our award-winning school districts. I finally moved into Samamish 13 years ago, many years after starting my teaching career. I was fortunate enough to build a 15,000-square-foot Rambler at cost due to the kindness of a family member who was a contractor. Otherwise, I never would have been able to afford to live here. There were no smaller homes or any affordable units being built in Samamish then or now. There seems to be this view from many who are against growth, that the people who move in to more affordable housing will be a detriment or cause of blight on our wonderful community. They can work here but not live here. I don't believe this for a second. To me, this is shortsighted and selfish. Everyone should have a chance to share in the beauty of Samamish, because we are a welcoming and diverse community. What an opportunity to create a town center and city that reflects the whole population. The negative talk about growth in the town center is from the same small vocal group. Please know they are not the majority. They do not represent me or my Samamish neighborhood and network. You do. And you were elected to move the town center plan forward. Aside from the tribes, we are all guests here who moved to Samamish from somewhere else. I admit, these folks against growth are loud, and to be honest, sometimes intimidating. I'm speaking, however, to urge you to consider expanding the town center to offer more diverse and affordable living choices. A town center where people can reside, shop, enjoy a meal, walk, ride, and take transit without owning a vehicle if they choose. Samamish is not an island. I lived on Molokai in Hawaii. That is an island. Please help Samamish continue to grow and be the welcoming community for our current and future residents, both young and old, as it has been for all of us who moved and live here now. Thank you for demonstrating continued inclusive thinking. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your commitment to everyone in Samamish. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all for public comment.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we're going to presentations and proclamations.
We do have a representative here to accept the proclamation.
That's amazing.
Okay.
That's great. I'd like to actually read this particular proclamation. It's for Disability Pride Month, and the group that will be receiving this is Kindering. It's unfortunate that you're leaving, because Kindering is a fabulous organization, and it's one you should know about. Kindering is an organization that works with kids, and I'm a CASA, I'm a court-appointed advocate for kids in the foster care system. And many of the kiddos that I work with, I have deficits in their environments. And so Kindering is the one that steps up and absolutely brings those kids from birth-to-three services up to such an amazing level, they do swear that they had no deficits whatsoever, and they're able to propel their lives forward in an astonishing way. So this is Disability Pride Month, July 2025, where as people with disabilities have a proud history of fighting for inclusion and justice, where as people with disabilities have experienced generations of marginalized and deserve equitable treatment in the workplace, education system, and every other part of our community, and where as every July is Disability Pride Month, which is dedicated to honoring the history, achievements, experiences, and struggles of the disability community, and where as Disability Pride Month marks the anniversary of America's with Disabilities Act, ADA, landmark legislation signed in July 26, 1990, prohibiting discrimination against individuals with disabilities in all areas of public life, and where as about 20% of King County adults are living with a disability, according to annual surveys conducted by the Washington State Department of Health and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and where as thousands of children in King County live with disabilities, highlighting the importance of early support, inclusion, and community pride in every stage of life, and where as the city of Samamish supports and embraces people with disabilities and aims to be an inclusive place where people of all abilities can thrive. Therefore, I, Karen Howe, Mayor of the city of Samamish, do hereby proclaim July 2025 to be Disability Pride Month in the city of Samamish, and I encourage all residents
My name is Jill Clacy, and I serve as the FIT, our Families in Transition Family and Community Engagement Specialist at Kindering. Our FIT team works with families experiencing housing insecurity and other barriers to services. You may be familiar with this program, as Samamish is one of our supporters, for which we're very grateful. As you may know, actually, Mayor Howard gave a great presentation about Kindering, but we are a local nonprofit serving children with disabilities, developmental delays, and other needs. We provide early supports, pediatric therapies, parent education, inclusive preschool, and more. Last year, we served over 160 young children from the city of Samamish. So why is Disability Pride important to Kindering? It's important because we work with lots of wonderful little kids with disabilities who will grow up into wonderful adults with disabilities. We want them to grow up, sorry, into a world that supports... We want them to grow up, sorry, into a world that supports, includes, and celebrates them. I've lived in Semamish for over 20 years, and I have a son with autism, and so it's really particularly important to me, so excuse me for getting emotional, but this is an amazing thing. And that's exactly what you're doing with this proclamation. You're sending a clear message to our families that you care about their kids now, and you will care about them as adults, and that you will treat them with the respect and dignity they deserve. For that, I'm grateful as a mom, and as a representative of Kindering, please accept my sincere thank you for recognizing Disability Pride Month. We appreciate the city promoting disability inclusion in a small but powerful way, so on behalf of Kindering again, thank you, it means a lot.
Okay. So now we are going to our Sustainability Commission interviews and appointments.
Mayor Howe, do you have the paper there that has the order for the interviews?
So, for Sustainability Commission, we have Swan, Stefan, Pranav, Carrie, is it Carrie? And Angela. So is, let's see, I don't know who's here. Okay, Swan is here, correct?
Yes.
Great. So Swan Jacobson, what topics would you like to see the Sustainability Commission work on during your tenure if you're appointed? You have, how long are we giving folks? Can you, five, up to five minutes? Thank you, great. And would you please make sure that we know more about you too? So use this as an opportunity to give a bit of a bio about yourself, and then the work you'd like to do during your tenure if appointed?
Absolutely, thank you very much. My name is Swan Jacobson, I'm 24 years old, and I've lived here for about 11 years this summer. I went to, probably the most relevant, I went to Tesla STEM High School, which is involved with, the students there have been involved with a lot of different things. And while I was there was while we had the organization Schools Under 2C Active, and that was in response to President Trump announcing his intent to pull the US from the Paris Agreement, which was an international treaty to reduce carbon emission levels and other greenhouse gas emissions, to keep global warming below the 2-degree Celsius point that would cause even more irreversible changes to the environment. And as a part of that, we did our part within, just within Tesla STEM, we reduced our carbon emissions below that level through lighting reductions, through waste reduction, through educating the people in our school about how to dispose of things, and reducing landfill, something that was brought up earlier today as well. We didn't just stop at our school, though. We did outreach to other schools in the area, we did a trip up to Darrington, two-hour trip north, and spoke with students there. And we even got in touch with some schools internationally that were interested in making those same changes for themselves. On the commission, I know recently there's been, that those initiatives have continued with schools in the area, at Eastlake, at Skyline, at Tesla STEM, and many others. And I also know that some of those have had, from listening to the most recent Sustainability Commission meeting, I know that some of those had some challenges actually getting those initiatives through and having support from staff, faculty at the school. So one thing I would like to help with, if I do join the commission, is pushing for more support at those schools. Over the summer is an excellent time for more of that to be planned out, so that we can, at the beginning of the year, so we can go to the schools with those students that are there as ambassadors to the Sustainability Commission, and have a plan to garner more support and get more of those changes happening, get more education to the students about the environment that's around us. I can keep talking more, if there's any other questions or anything else you'd like me to expand on?
You technically have two minutes and 38, 37, 36. So if there's more that you wanted to add, great, if you want to be done, you can absolutely escape.
Give me a second, I'll talk a bit more. Another just point of interest that I have is public transit, which I know has been a hot topic here in Semamish recently with a lot of different factors, because I'm someone who enjoys driving, like just as an activity, it is fun for me. That being said, public transit is really important, and there are times that I wish that it was more of an option for me. Before I had my car, I had summer drop down in Issaquah, and it was, like every day over the summer, I would be taking like an 8:00 AM bus down there. And it was really helpful to be able to do that and to have that as a resource for me. And that should be more accessible at more times to a larger variety of residents. Similarly, someone mentioned earlier that they live on the other side of the city. The town center is not walkable for them because there isn't a way for them to get there. If there can be more local transit within the city, even if there's not, even if there are whatever challenges there are for out-of-city transit and getting people off the plateau, there are also ways that sustainable transit can exist within the city, that would probably help with traffic, it would reduce the gridlock around the town center, it would reduce the parking challenges, it would make the space more accessible for people. And so if that's another thing that could be pushed from the Sustainability Commission, that's definitely something that I would enjoy being able to provide input and speak on. I guess just a little bit more about me. I went to Digipen Institute of Technology, graduated with a Bachelor of Arts in Game Design, so I make video games, I make tabletop games, it's something that I have a lot of passion for, it's something that I really enjoy doing. And through, and there are a lot of different ways that people engage with the communities around them, whether that's digitally or physically in person, and the more ways that we can do to support that while also supporting a greener environment and sustainable projects, the more that people can be able to do things and have fun with the people around them. So, yeah.
Congratulations, you got it down to 20 seconds. It's impressive.
I can fill a lot of time if I have to, if I have to keep going. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Stefan Skypers.
Hello, greetings, council members and fellow residents, and sadly they've left, but wanted to give a shout-out to Kindering, big fan of theirs. I've never had a monologue interview before, so this is kind of what I did want to ask. I would probably prefer if I had the chance to offer people the opportunity for questions. I don't know if that's allowed.
That's not going to work, but what you can do is you can inspire us to have questions to ask you later. So I, going along with...
Ask myself questions, I can ask myself questions.
You can ask and answer your own damn question.
I ask myself questions all the time, I'm very good at that. All right. So a little bit about me, my name is Stefan Skypers, recent resident of Semamish, been here for about three years. I have two kids, so it's me, my wife, two kids, soon to be second grader, soon to be kindergartner. And a little bit about me, like my accent, I'm from South Africa. Before coming here, I spent nine years in Houston, Texas, and it was quite a considered move coming here. I used to be a lecturer at the University Professor, as we say in the US, teaching philosophy and ethics. I have a master's in cognitive science, and I really enjoyed that life, I really enjoyed academics, and I really enjoyed teaching. Then my wife and I, having been married for a few years, decided we wanted to come spend two years in the States, and then it became three years, and then it became two kids, and then it became Semamish. Yes, so, long story short, I had a big sort of change of trajectory during COVID. I had pursued a career in law, and I was busy working as a paralegal and studying law, and sort of a culmination of finishing my law degree and second kid coming around, COVID hitting and all sorts of things, led to a kind of need to reassess things and appoint myself as kind of head of mental health for the family, and just really make some dedicated decisions about where we want to go and that sort of thing. A lot of the questions I asked myself ended up having a sort of common thread and ended up dovetailing with the idea of climate change being something I really want to address, both personally and largely for the sake of my kids. And that got me to sort of see that this law career is really great and really useful only insofar as it can help me make a difference to the climate crisis. Came here, happy to see a lot of people engage very actively and take very seriously a lot of the sort of things that I see as important. I am currently co-chair of sustainability at my kid's school, Crystal McCullough Elementary down the road, and to answer the question of what would I like to see the Sustainability Commission work on, there are so many things, but really the biggest thing that I can answer is community engagement. I will preface that with saying, I think that is building on a success. I think this meeting itself is incredible evidence of the successful level of community engagement. I think the, I've been poring over the city website for probably the last two or three weeks, just looking at all the sustainability resources on there, really enjoy it. Having said that, in my work as a co-chair of sustainability, I've been having a lot of conversations and cultivating the habit of speaking to neighbors and community members, and I do see a lot of similar things come up, similar worries and similar sort of problems that people see with trajectories. And it's a sad state that sometimes the answers are out there. It might be that the answers are on a website, it might be that the answers are available at a, you know, community engagement event or something like that. And at the same time, I think that often from the city's side, in some of the meetings that I've seen recordings of, there's a quest for answers, and sometimes the answers are out there. People have answers to these, it's just a matter of marrying these two. So I think that I can do well to help bring those together, keep speaking to the city and bringing questions and answers from the community, and vice versa. Yeah, it's, I'm not very prepared in a speech, I hope some of this resonates, and I will say that I look forward to being a resource, whether or not I am a member of the Sustainability Commission. I think this is something I intend to engage with, as a few of you already know, something I intend to engage with regardless of my capacity. Thank you.
And thank you. Pranav Srivastha, and that's just as close as I'm going to get there.
Hello, my name is Pranav Srivastha, and I'm currently a junior at the University of Washington, and I'm studying environmental studies, and my particular focus is sustainability and sustainable growth. And I've been a resident of Semamish for close to the last 10 years. So I think there are many important issues for the city to address. I would also like to talk about more sustainable transit. It's difficult for many people to access the city center from the communities that are further, and even for students, there are many who are not eligible for public buses, for school buses, but are still too far to walk, especially in the winter weather. So I think there needs to be more work done on accessibility. Additionally, Semamish isn't well-integrated, as it could be into the greater public transit situation. If I want to go to Seattle, I need to make two, three, or even potentially four stops on my way, and this makes it very challenging, and the link continually gets delayed, so it's still not really a feasible alternative for students. Another thing that I think needs to be addressed is, in terms of the idea of sustainable growth, as the town center likely will expand, we need to maintain the balance between the environmental principles and ensuring, like if people need to leave the plateau in order to get essential goods and services just by driving, they're having a negative impact on the environment. So even in events held by the City of Semamish, like the Semamish Farmer's Market, we should be moving away from the use of single-use plastic and other substances that are detrimental to the environment, and moving towards more of a circular economy and rewarding people for choosing options that are more renewable. Additionally, I was involved in lobbying for the, to defeat some proposals and also in favor of some proposals that were proposed on the state level, and one that did not pass was the requirement moving away from gas and towards electric. And as a county, King County voted in support of that proposal, so I think as new development occurs in terms of cooking, heating our houses, fireplaces, the city should be looking to move away from natural gas, because of its detrimental health impacts, which are very well-documented. I also think that there is currently outreach happening with schools, like through the Sustainability Ambassadors Program, and I think that's very good, but I think further steps could be taken. I graduated from Eastlake High School, and during my time there, recycling and garbage were both being processed as one because of high rates of recycling contamination, and students spoke out about how, students spoke out about how they wanted to move away from that, and with greater education that was led by the students, not by any other outside faculty, we moved for the school to make changes in policy, and there are many environmental associations that are, that are on the high school level, the middle school level, and even on the college level, and I think there can be more buy-in from the community, more innovative solutions can be heard, because many people are not aware, Semamish residents, of the different commissions, and so it's not always representative of what the body as a whole is thinking. So I think involving the younger generations and hearing more new ideas will lead to better results, because growth is inevitable, but we should ensure that Semamish remains a sustainable place to live, and we can enjoy the clean air, the water that all of us really value. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll promote, the next applicant is online.
Great.
Karen Marie, when you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I can't seem to get the video to work, but if you can hear me, then we'll just go ahead. All right, well, here we go. All right, hi, my name is Karen Marie Harper. I will have lived in Semamish for 26 years, actually later this month, and so it's been a great place to live over these past years. I have a degree in cell and molecular biology from the University of Washington. I work in the clinical trials research industry. I primarily manage clinical trials that are in the neurology indications, such as MS, Parkinson's disease, Alzheimer's, et cetera. I have a son who is a student at Skyline, and over the years, I have been very involved in the community, in scouts, with the Issquah School District, as a member of the Board of the Volunteers for Issquah Schools, and on the Kwahani Swim Team as well. So I feel, I have a vested interest in the community, and I feel it's my civic duty to be involved, and that's why I'm interested in joining the Sustainability Commission. As far as topics I would like to see the commission work on if I am appointed, there's three main things that I would like to draw your attention to this evening. And actually, just in listening to the folks that have spoken at this meeting, they gave me an additional two ideas from people who spoke earlier in the public comments section. me an additional two ideas from people who spoke earlier in the public comments section. So it's great to see such involvement from the community. The first item is in regard to the Sustainability Ambassador Program. I was watching the video of the most recent Commission meeting where the Sustainability ambassadors from the local high schools were represented. And I was very impressed with their, their knowledge and their enthusiasm for sustainability in our community and the things that they are doing to promote that within their schools and community. I think that we can continue that partnership. And one thing that I was thinking about, a way to do that would be to provide some sort of award or incentive to students who consistently carpool, walk, or bike to school. So I know once kids get their driver's licenses, they're very excited to drive to school and they all seem to drive independently. So it would be great to see more kids carpooling, walking, or biking to school and using the provided school buses from the district as well. So if we could partner with the ambassadors to make that a fun thing and provide some sort of incentives for, for kids who are willing to do that, that would be excellent. The second part of that would be to have more community groups partner with the ambassadors and the Sustainability Committee, such as scout groups, sports leagues, or faith-based groups, to provide service hour opportunities for, for students in those groups to do things like planting, planting trees, habitat restoration, invasive species removal, and such items. When my son was seven, actually, he told me, he said, "For my birthday, I want to plant trees." So we partnered with the city of Smamish and he and his friends got together and planted a bunch of trees down in the Lower Commons Park. So he loves to go there and look at the trees that he planted 10 years ago and see how much they've grown over the years. So I think getting kids involved in doing things like that really gives them an investment in their community and they can see the actual impacts that they're having. I'm sorry, I can't see the clock here, so I don't know how much time I have left.
You've got about a minute and a half.
Okay, thank you. So the number two item that I had on my list is around preserving green spaces. As was pointed out earlier by someone else in the meeting, obviously, we have a lot of wildlife here in our area. I've seen bear scat behind my house recently. I see coyotes and bobcats regularly in my neighborhood. One of the people who spoke in the public comments, I believe his name was Paul, was talking about incentivizing residents to compost more and recycle more rather than just send their items to the landfill and a program to, to promote that. I think that's something the Sustainability Commission could get on board with. And also, I've called multiple times over the years to Republic Services to talk about providing bear-proof trash receptacles to residents. And they're not willing to do that and they're very expensive if you buy them on your own. So if we could do something, something around that, that would promote composting, recycling, and getting bear-proof trash receptacles, that would help both the wildlife in our community and the residents of our community, I think that would be excellent. And then the third piece that I'm interested in working on is around water. So there's a part of the climate impact plan that talks about low-impact drought-resistant landscaping. So I believe her name was Anna, who spoke earlier about saying she was a landscape designer. So I'd love to work with her on providing incentives through maybe the Master of the Gardeners and various HOAs in our community to promote the drought-resistant landscaping.
Okay, you've reached the end of your time there. Thank you, Carrie. Carrie Marie.
Karen Marie.
Thank you. And so we've got Angela Rivera, who is not here, but she had a family vacation apparently that was long planned. Her statement is, "I would love to see the Commission provide practical recommendations for the city to realize its vision in a sustainable way. Recommendations could range from RFP and specification verbiage to procurement reporting requirements to targeted KPIs. I would also hope to contribute to the definition of development requirements that would facilitate sustainable outcomes for the larger community. There are many demands on the city to develop and densify, and this could be achieved in a resilient, environmentally responsible manner. The Commission could help define resiliency requirements." So, counsel, good luck, man, kids. First of all, thank you all, because yay, you're all imminently qualified and you would all be excellent. And we can, we can appoint one person. So, counsel, go ahead and good luck. And I'll also just make the advertising comment that these positions come open fairly frequently. And I would be so delighted if any of you reapplied. I would encourage and buy you a coffee out of some sustainability ground something.
And if we could have Councilmember Train provide his vote orally.
Very good. So it looks like Swan Jacobson, you have won this round. Thank you for participating and thank you everyone for being involved. Because seriously, these, these slots do come open with a fair amount of regularity and we would be thrilled to have you apply because again, you're all more than capable. And I'll stop talking. I think at this point, we will go to Interviews for Arts and, let's see, the Arts Commission, please. And then we'll be doing the appointment. Are we appointing now?
We can appoint now.
Okay.
And do the resolution.
Can I just do the, is there a motion to appoint or can I just say? Is there language?
I think there's a resolution on the.
Is there? Where is that?
Here.
Where is it?
Should be, this one, Resolution 2025.
Okay, there we go. So is there a motion for a resolution, appointing one member to the Sustainability Commission,
Yeah, I move to appoint, was it Swan Jacobson?
Yes.
Via the Resolution 2025-1112.
Second. Moved as seconded. All those in favor, do you want to speak to your motion?
No.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. And thank you, Swan, for being willing to do this public service. We deeply appreciate it. We will now go back to the Arts Commission. And we have Gwen and Holly. And they're both via Zoom, correct?
Yes, and I just want to confirm to see if Gwen is in the room because she's not joined online. And so I will go to the next applicant, Holly. Holly, when you're ready.
Good evening, my name is Holly Polke. First, I want to thank the Arts Commission for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am 41 years old and a Pacific Northwest native. I've lived in Smamish for the past six years. I have a master's degree in criminal justice and have been highly involved in local PTA, specifically in the arts. And I have chaired for the last two years a ceramics program at Mead Elementary. And we have received a grant from the city of Smamish to further that program and further help kids get more involved in the arts. One of the other things that has inspired me to apply for this position was Smamish Public Art by Margaret Rosnow. She recently published a book of all the public art in Smamish. And I think it's a really beautiful book, all the wonderful public art. And so to now answer the question, if I were appointed to the local Arts Commission, there are a few things that I would love to focus on. First, making art accessible for all. I believe everyone should have the opportunity to experience and create art regardless of their background, income, or ability. And I'd like to explore ways to remove barriers to ensure greater inclusion in the arts programming and events, such as expanding on some of the things that the Art Commission is currently doing with local schools, for example. Next, I'd like to expand public art. Public art can shape a community's identity and bring people together. And I'd like to support initiatives that bring more art to our public spaces. Lastly, I'd love to deepen community engagement. I'd love to help build stronger connections between artists and the broader community by creating more opportunities for collaboration and participation. Overall, I want to help make the arts visible, accessible, and a celebrated part of everyday life in Smamish. Thank you.
And thank you. Did Gwen show up by any chance? So we'll go ahead to the vote then. And this will be for one position. It appears that we have a solution here. So Holly, I am going to welcome you to the Arts Commission and thank you so much for being willing to serve. We appreciate your, your presentation and your, your JotForm submission so much. And, you know, just so you know, everybody does read those, so they really matter. At this point, I'm looking for a motion to have a resolution to appoint one member to the Smamish Arts Commission, R2025-1111.
So moved.
Sure.
So moved.
Second. Okay, moved as seconded. Do you want to speak to the motion?
Thank you so much for applying. Looking forward to working with you.
Great. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Motion carries. Thank you and welcome to the Commission. I think you really will enjoy the group. Holly, because the strategic arts plan in particular is, is she here? I mean, she does, she's gone, dang.
She's probably not much.
I know, but I thought she might still be online.
No, Amber Pichro. She's just been demoted.
Demoted, okay. I've been having a hard day, apparently.
Hard year.
So the strategic art plan is fabulous and I think you're going to find it a guiding light, actually, to just help, help take your ideas that you already have and to put them into a framework that makes it actionable. So we look forward to your work. Thank you so much. Okay. It's an exciting moment. We're going on a new business. We're going to have a discussion and an informational overview of the Bike and Pedestrian Mobility Plan process and schedule. We have Audrey, Greg, Lindsay, and Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Counsel. As the team is settling in, I'll have a quick introduction. So for the record, I'm Audrey Starsee, the Deputy, or I'm sorry, the Director of Public Works. To my right is Greg Stamatio, our Deputy Director of Public Works. We are also joined this evening by Lindsay Channing, our Transportation Planner, as well as, I don't know if you've met Andrew, our Senior Transportation Planner. So very excited to have Andrew on board. And Andrew and Lindsay have a great presentation for you this evening about our Bike and Pedestrian Mobility Plan. So this plan is an integral piece, will become an integral piece of our TMP that we're planning to update later on this year, as noted in your agenda reports. This presentation this evening is intended to be kind of an informational overview, kind of a check-in of where we're at to date, and we would love to hear from you if we're missing anything along the way. With that, Lindsay, whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Lindsay Channing, Transportation Planner, and we're very excited to be here today. I'm sorry, let me start over. I saw a red light and I thought it was on. Mayor, Counsel, thank you for having us this evening. I'm Lindsay Channing. I'm a transportation planner here for the city and we're very excited to give you the first taste of introduction to our Bike and Pedestrian Mobility Plan. So this evening, we have a number of topics we'd like to go over at a high level with you all, which include our objectives, some of the milestones we've reached so far, our priority network and level of traffic stress, some conversation around the school analysis we've been completing, our draft policies, and the next steps and schedule. So as far as our objective goes, I will read this statement. I'm not going to read everything verbatim, but I think this is a great statement. So it says, "The plan will align with the goals of Smamish's transportation master plan and focuses on providing a safe, connected, and efficient walking, rolling, and biking network in Smamish." So we're really excited for this because it's really the directive of our TMP. In Section 5.2.1 of our TMP, it gave the direction for us to complete a Bike and Pedestrian Plan. As you know, that TMP is new for the city. We just got that adopted in December, so we're moving right along. The plan's intended to be a long-term plan that we can come back and update periodically as needed. It will reflect community input. It will advance the city's multimodal transportation vision. And it will implement our goals and policies of both our transportation element and the comp plan and our TMP, along with aligning with the comprehensive plan and other city This slide is showing you kind of what we've completed and what we're working on. So there's a screenshot there of our existing conditions memo. This was completed a few months ago. It is available on the project website. Later in this presentation, we will have a QR code that can be scanned for direct access to that website. But it has a lot of fantastic information in it to kind of set the stage for where we're going and where the city's at currently. We have also been working on our Bike and Pedestrian Criteria for projects, so we have a first draft of that. We also have an ongoing first draft of our facility recommendations by road classification for Bike and Pedestrian facilities. You'll see a peek at that this evening. We also have been working diligently with our consultant to put together a prioritized project list with planning level cost estimates. We're not quite at that stage of having estimates and a solidified list yet, so please stay tuned because we will be bringing that. so please stay tuned because we will be bringing that forward with our draft plan. And then in the future, in the fall, you will see the draft plan and the final plan. So I'd like to talk a little bit about our priority network and level of traffic stress. This map should look familiar. It's the Bicycle and Pedestrian Priority Network. This was set through our TMP. And the red lines are our principal arterials, the blue are minor collector, excuse me, minor arterials, and the green lines are collector arterials. I do want to note on this map, just for clarification, that the red principal arterial of 202 is shown. However, we do recognize that it is outside of city limits. This also should be a fairly recognizable map because it was addressed in our TMP as well. This is the existing Bike and Sidewalk Facility Gaps maps. So on the left hand of the screen, you'll see the bicycle facility gaps in orange lines. The solid lines mean that there are no facilities along that stretch of the roadway. The hashed or dashed lines means that there is a facility, but it's only on one side. The same goes for sidewalks with the red lines on the right-hand side. Solid means no facility. Dashed or hashed means a facility only on one side. And again, I will note, this is on our arterial network only as that is the framework that was identified through the TMP for this version of the plan. All right. This also should look somewhat familiar to council as we adopted our Level of Traffic Stress Guidelines in the TMP as well. So as a refresher, we, for our principal and collector arterials, have a guideline of LTS 2, both for pedestrian and bicycle, so that can accommodate most people and most riders' abilities. Minor arterials, we had indicated a slightly higher level of traffic stress at 3. I do want to point out, however, that, and as a reminder, Level of Traffic Stress is a guideline and not a requirement. The city set these recommended levels for our arterials. And there are instances where we may not be able to meet our guidelines. It could be along an entire corridor, or it could be a portion of a road or street or corridor. Some examples of why in the future we may not be able to always meet our guidelines, which is acceptable because they are guidelines, not requirements, is there's already existing infrastructure there. The cost is too high. There's critical areas, or there's right-of-way that is not available. I'm sure there's lots of other reasons, but I wanted to address this upfront. All right. This is an important slide. Again, this is the description of our Level of Traffic Stress that was adopted through the TMP. But what you see here is a number of track changes. And that's important because we based our Level of Traffic Stress off of WashDOT's guidance. And in the late fall of 2024, WashDOT actually updated their guidance. So what we adopted with the TMP is no longer in line with WashDOT's most recent guidance for Level of Traffic Stress. So we are proposing to update that. This is explained in that existing conditions memo that I mentioned earlier. You'll see that they've added, for instance, with an AADT, less than 3,000 vehicles, AADT means Average Annual Daily Traffic. They've also added some classifications around speed limits as well for more clarity, which we think is really helpful. I do want to point out, just for everyone to be aware of, that we all know Sahaly Corridor Study is well underway with various options being proposed at the moment. And the consultant working on that is using the latest WashDOT guidance. So it will be in line with what we're proposing here this evening and through the plan. All right. These are draft recommendations for bike facilities to achieve various levels of traffic stress. We're still working on these. This is a first run at it. But it's very easy to understand, we believe, graphic. It's color-coded and based on type of arterial. It gives different options for what recommended facilities would be based on the level of traffic stress you're trying to achieve for that roadway. This is the Bike Facilities chart. And the next slide is the exact same thing, but for pedestrian facilities. All right. These maps are current 2024, which is the latest data that we have, bicycle level of traffic stress, with the very light purple being an LTS 1. Going to blue is LTS 2, green is LTS 3, and the dark purple is very high-stress, LTS 4. This is the same colors for both pedestrian and bicycle levels of traffic stress. What I do want to point out, that East Lake-Samamish Parkway is shown as very high-stress. We acknowledge that, and we want to make it very clear that East Lake-Samamish Parkway LTS does not account for the adjacent East Lake-Samamish Trail facility. That is why it's listed as an LTS 4. The reasoning for this is because WashDOT's guidance for LTS does not take into consideration facilities that are not on the existing roadway. So for that, because these are our recommendations, these are our guidelines, we are able to make modifications as necessary. So we are considering the East Lake-Samamish Trail as the facility for the East Lake-Samamish Parkway. Once these maps are updated and put into the draft plan, we will have it indicated very clearly that that is the case. We may not be able to show it as a better level of traffic stress, but it will be indicated very clearly that there is a facility available for that roadway. And we're working with our consultant on what their recommendation is to best indicate that. As I mentioned, we are also working on our project priority criteria. So how do we come up with projects that are either pedestrian or bicycle or both friendly for the city? So our consultants worked really diligently with us and has created a system to use GIS analysis to help us with this. So this map that you're seeing here is a draft raster image map. So it's a series of little tiny squares, which is why it looks a bit fuzzy, and they're not straight lines. But this map does show the lowest need in that darkest green. And then it works its way up to the highest need in dark red. We do want to call out that any project that's listed in our Transportation Improvement Plan, or soon to be the Citywide CIP for the Transportation Section, that is known and has some type of funding put towards it, whether it's a corridor study or an actual project, has been factored into this analysis. So it's not showing as a high need, even though it may be today because this is looking at projects for the next five, 10, 20 years. And the assumption is, is that because those projects are already identified on our tip, that they will account for sufficient multimodal facilities to meet our guidelines and future city regulations. Briefly, the criteria that's being considered as we're trying to work with our consultant coming up with a project list includes both Bike and Pedestrian Facility Gaps, Level of Traffic Stress, Level of Service for Bicycle and Pedestrians, their proximity to schools, commercial areas, and transit stops, non-motorized crash data density, so that's any accidents that are involving a pedestrian or a bicyclist, and then slope. As I mentioned, we've also taken this and added in some more detailed school analysis. So I'm going to turn it over to Andrew to talk through that a little bit.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Andrew Spiliotis, Senior Transportation Planner with the city. Nice to meet all of you. So as Lindsay was mentioning, we did some internal bike-ped analysis as it relates to schools to complement the work that DKS conducted. Lindsay covered that the arterial collector roadways that they analyze. But we're aware that there are definitely needs off of those roadways, especially as it relates to schools. So we wanted to do some analysis to identify projects on non-arterial roadways. So the map on the left, as Lindsay covered, that is the roads our consultant, DKS, looked at. The map on the right is our draft project map as it relates to projects to access schools. Some safer routes to schools programs, like WashDOT's, they'll look at two miles out from schools. The first part was kind of figuring out how far out we wanted to look. We looked at two miles. We looked at one mile, one mile took in the entire city, given how many schools we have. So we landed on half a mile. We thought that was a good distance, especially for younger students, kind of reasonable for them to be able to walk or bike within half a mile. So once we established that half a mile buffer, we looked at some of the existing sidewalk data we had to figure out where some of the gaps are. So we used that to identify projects. We also tried to prioritize locations where there may be other benefits, like access to parks, transit, commercial areas. So that's the analysis we did and the methods that we came up with. The 15 to 20 projects you see in the draft project map. So this slide shows kind of a Frankenstein map of the left side is the north part of the city. The south side, or the right side is the south side. The legend shows the different project types, sidewalks, bike lanes, projects that may establish a bike-ped connection where there could be some type of barrier, and then shared use paths, which are paved, typically 12-foot paved trails. So for the shared use paths, we also made sure to pay attention to the pros plan, the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, to make sure we were being consistent with some of these school access shared use paths we recommend, especially for some of the ones where we know there's some opportunities and utility easements. The last thing I wanted to mention, you may recall that in the tip, or now the Transportation CIP, there's a School Zone Safety Improvement category. So our thoughts are, you know, these 15 to 20 projects in the long term could potentially help populate that program in the future, like a small number of projects moving into inform that program. With that, I will turn it back to Lindsay Channing to talk about the draft policies.
Thank you, Andrew. So we do have a few draft policies that we want to highlight briefly as well. The first being some draft policies around crosswalks. We have seven currently. They range from things such as adding additional marked crosswalks at intersections to looking at prioritized locations, focusing on school routes, transit bus stop crossings, and our commercial areas, especially town center. Also, what facilities are part of our transportation network that should be ADA compliant that maybe are not today as we continue to update our facilities. And then another one could be appropriate crosswalk spacing is something that we need to determine as a city to ensure that they're not too far spaced out and they're also not too close together. The other policy that I know everyone is very interested in, and this is a very first draft document that you're seeing here, is draft e-scooter and e-bike policy recommendations. We acknowledge that technology is changing rapidly, and we're all trying to keep up with the new types of bikes, especially that are available to the public. We have been working very closely in discussions with our police department about this issue. And our police department actually is planning on coming and having a conversation with council, I believe, at the July 15 meeting. So we're very excited that they're able to do that and kind of have that discussion of what they're seeing and what they're able to address today and how they see it moving forward. We've also all been working collaboratively on putting together an informative webpage that we hope to have live here in the next few weeks to help the community understand what the different types of motorized bicycles and scooters, et cetera, are, and what current regulations are around them, and how we are able to monitor and hopefully address concerns with them as well. Again, these are initial policies. This chart is showing, blue is that they're an existing policy somewhere in city code or plan. The orange is what we're recommending updating at this point. But again, very preliminary first draft, working on making sure that we're capturing all that there is out there and making it as safe as possible for our community. Right. Lastly, I'd like to touch on public participation. I'm really excited to announce that we had our first community meeting back in February, at the end of February. And for this type of meeting, we had a fantastic turnout. We had quite a few people in attendance, as you can see on that snapshot there from the YouTube video before the presentation began. We were able to have a fantastic conversation in a roundtable format around a large map. We were able to jot down comments on sticky notes, place them on there. People were feeding off of each other, providing really valuable input and information. Anything that was captured on sticky notes on that paper map was added into that map that you see there on the right hand of the screen. This is an interactive map that we used and had open for a month for public participation. And I was really excited, I'm really excited to be able to report out that we got 260 comments from over 100 unique commenters. So over 100 individuals commented, which was really fantastic. We had much more participation in this than we've had in other policy work that we've done in the past. And we really appreciate everyone's diligent participation, whether they entered it on this map, or they wrote it down at that meeting, or I sat down with them at a table during the workday and met with them, or they emailed in to us, we made sure it all got reflected on this map as well. While this isn't taking new input, you can still find this map on our project website, and you can still click on all those links and see what the comments are. And so we have used this information to help guide the recommendations that we're coming up with with our project plan as well. So some of the main feedback that we got during that timeframe from a pedestrian safety standpoint was that people would like to see our sidewalk networks get completed, more enforcement of speeding, more marked crosswalks, and they also would like to see more flashing beacons at key intersections. The two that were most called out in that interaction was East Beaver Lake Drive and the intersection of Northeast 37th Way and 205th Place, Northeast, excuse me. As far as bicycle safety, there was a lot of support for additional bike lanes, those bike lanes having barriers or some type of protection with them, lane markings and signage along popular routes. So wayfinding-type signs to help advertise that these bike routes exist, especially in the Trossachs and Inglewood Hill area. So lastly, we love these charts because we think they really show well where we're at in the process. So we started this in late December. And now we're into summer here at the beginning of July. And we've, we'll have our next community workshop where we're going to be able to report back out to the community and get some more great feedback from them on July 16 here in Chambers from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. I will be sending out emails to our massive email list here next week. There'll be notification in the paper. We also will be posting at various sites around the city like we did for the first community workshop. Another thing that we're really excited for this community meeting is that it is on a Wednesday evening. So we're hoping that folks join us and enter from the farmer's market. We'll also have a poster up in City Hall advertising it as well to try and draw people in. So as far as ways folks can participate through the rest of this process, again, that community workshop in the middle of July. And then we will be coming back to council in the fall with our draft plan to have a work session. And then that will turn into a public hearing. And then hopeful to have that continued public hearing and adoption in late fall. So comments can be provided to me at my email address there on the screen. You also can use that QR code to access our project website, and my email address is listed on that as well. on that as well. With that, we thank you for your time this evening and we welcome any questions.
Counsel. Okay, and the board lights up. Okay, Councilmember Stewart first.
Oh my gosh, I'm so excited about this. Thank you so much. Couple of things. You touched on it in some of the community feedback. You touched on it briefly when you talked about the school zones. But one of the things I think is really important is to look at other ways to get around as pedestrians and bikers, although I think we shouldn't call it walking, rolling, and biking, we should just call it rocking and rolling, come on. But I think having, as we identify the other means of connectivity, and like Mary brought up in her public comment about if there are ways to create other connectivity points to put up signage. I know where we live, there's kind of a secret path in between two pieces of property where we can travel on neighborhood streets and then up that path and not have to go on a busier street that has no shoulder, no bike path, no sidewalks, no anything. So being able to find little places like that where we can even build things like that, where it's really narrow, it's not very wide, but it works, right? And so those are options for us to look for to create those other points of connectivity because not everybody, even when you create a higher level of safety, is going to want their kids riding on the side of 228, right? So being able to do that, those might also be a lot less expensive, right? So there might be ways to, you know, have people be able to take, you know, a bike route or a pedestrian route to a bus stop that doesn't have to be on an arterial or a minor arterial. As we look at the standards, just like we talked about with the road standards, with construction costs just going through the roof, I think we should potentially think about our standards being more outcome-based and not how we achieve the outcome, right? So if the outcome that we're looking for is a safe place to walk or a safe place to ride, if we do that by simply having, you know, a barrier on the pavement and we don't have to build a separate sidewalk, which might be way more expensive, I think those are things we should start to consider because we really have to find ways to increase that connectivity but keeping those costs down. So those are just some thoughts I had. On the bike facilities chart, and I can send this one in, it was very specific, but there was like a row on there that just had something I didn't understand. The priority map, where you had the priority project map, I think you addressed it, but I want to make sure I understand it. Some of those said that they were super low priority even though they were areas that had the highest stress. And I think you said that's because we already have a project on the tip, and so you're assuming those projects will be complete. Is that accurate? Like the north end of Sahali Way had like low priority even though when you look at the map, it has like super high stress level, right?
That is absolutely correct, yes.
Perfect, perfect. And then when you look at the school radiuses, I think it's also important, you might want to take a look at what the actual school boundaries are. So I just happened to notice on one of them, even with the half a mile radius, part of that area is actually not even in the Issaquah School District, it's in Lake Washington. So those are not areas that would necessarily be trying to walk or bike to that school. So there's some of that sort of reality there. One of my things that I would love, I don't want to call it a pet project, but it's just something I really think would be beneficial, is considering a diagonal or an all like intersection crosswalk in front of Eastlake High School, right? We know that that light, whenever a pedestrian hits the button, all the lights go red. And so we don't allow diagonal crossing. So that means that somebody who wants to go diagonally actually has to stop traffic twice. And I think there are a lot of examples of that out there now where we can more efficiently move the pedestrians with less interruption to the traffic flow. And then, why are electric foot scooters treated as Class III bikes? I mean, I'm not questioning that it's the right answer, I'm just curious. So when you looked at the chart about like the policies about where they were allowed and where they weren't, they were like not allowed on sidewalks? And is it, do they go faster than like the Class I and Class II e-bikes? It was just curious.
That's something we'll have to look into and get back to you. I know that this is surrounding our existing policies and regulations that we have, so we'll have to take a look at that.
Okay. And then also, because it looked like you had existing policies and then you had some that were recommended, it said for soft trail services, all bikes were a no. And is that something that you're reconsidering? Because there are a lot of places where you don't have a choice. Like there are only soft places to ride because we don't have shoulders or other things and there are sometimes trails that aren't paved.
We can look into that further, but if memory serves me correctly, I believe that has to do with parks policies and bikes being allowed on soft surface trails within parks facilities itself.
Okay. We might want to look at that for maybe soft trail services that aren't in a park, right? That are maybe other areas. And then, this is sort of an intersection of, no pun intended, of the bike pad policy and the Sahali plan, but I know one of the, I mean, we saw community feedback, people want barriers, right, some separation on bike trails. And I know one of the, and we want slower traffic, right? We want to slow people down. We know that having really wide roadways encourages people to go faster, right? There's a whole sort of psychology to that. And one of the arguments against putting in the barrier between the road and the bike trail was we needed a place for people to pull off for emergencies. I've seen other places where they have gaps in the barriers so that if someone does have to pull off, there is a way to do that, but you can still have the separation generally between the road and the bikes. And that also creates the more narrow roadways along more of the road to slow people down. So just, again, sort of the thinking outside of the box, right? And if we have to divert our bikes onto some, you know, neighborhood streets and get them off some of those arterials, I don't think that's altogether a bad thing. So, thank you. I am really, as you can see, I'm very enthusiastic and excited about this. Thanks so much.
Councilmember Gupta, and also, I'm going by memory now because this is dead. And also just a reminder for Councilmember Trean that if you have a raised hand function, that way I'll know you're there. And then you'll have to yell at me because I won't see it.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Also, very excited. As you can guess, this is very near and dear to my heart. So I just thank you for all the work, looking forward to seeing this implemented. When we're talking about prioritizing projects, is there any consideration of ease of implementation, like quick wins? I know in the, I think in the tip, there's like a sidewalk gap program which is quicker, but there's a, you know, smaller projects funding-wise. Is that the mechanism? Is there something discreet where we can say, this may not be filling the most important gap, but we think we can do it easily or quickly?
There's not an implementation criteria in our project criteria, but that's something that we can consider when we're putting together some of our programs, especially when we, the whole point of some of our programs, so we can bundle a handful of projects at once and then design one year and then go to construction immediately after, especially for those smaller projects. So that's something that we can consider, especially as we're putting together our six-year plans.
Okay, great. I was just thinking, you know, it'll be great to get the big connections that'll really connect a lot of people, but if there's something small that we can do easily, you know, I just want to make sure that doesn't get buried in the bottom just because it's not going to connect as many people.
Yeah, and just to expand a little bit on that, part of the reason why we created the different categories within the Transportation Citywide CIP, so some of the programs are kind of aimed at some smaller projects that aren't necessarily competing with corridor projects in terms of being able to implement them. So that was kind of some of the intent with those different categories.
Great. This is something I might have brought up before, but as we're encouraging hopefully more pedestrian traffic, especially along the arterials. So right now, if I'm walking north-south on 228, I'm traveling with the prevailing flow of traffic and I want to cycle a light, it stops the prevailing flow of traffic, it cycles everything. I'm stuck waiting, the cars are stuck waiting, then I walk, you know, 50 people are standing there staring at me wishing I didn't exist. And then I, you know, I cross and then traffic resumes. I don't know if that's a function of the ITS program that I know we're doing, or if this is something that could be a policy, but it seems like that is not the ideal situation for pedestrian to be in.
Thank you. I think that particular light, we've had a handful of issues with some of the adaptive management system. But I think one of the other policies that we're looking at is the crosswalk on all four legs of the intersection. We can certainly look at some other methodologies, like diagonal crossings too, if that's something that would work in this community. But right now, there's a lot of intersections throughout Simamish that only have, you know, crosswalks on three sides, so really making it, it's a long time to travel. That was identified in the transit plan as a barrier to transit access as well.
Connectivity for cul-de-sacs, I know there are challenges, especially when it's, you know, there are questions of whether it's public or private. My understanding is David Pyle specifically worked on this in Bellevue. So hopefully, you know, it's great that when we can build on work that other cities have done, our planning director has done that work. So hopefully we can use him as a resource because I do think that is incredibly important, both for connecting schools and just connecting our neighborhoods. You know, I have experienced many times where I'm here, I need to get here, and I got to go all the way around. So if we are seriously asking people to get out of their cars, you know, I think it's incumbent upon us to make it as easy as possible. I understand the scope of this project is mainly focused on the priority routes, but I want to make sure that is not also lost as we're doing all this mapping work. I'm sorry, I don't know if there's a question there. The, so for the raster map, it did show that there were, along Eastlake Simamish Parkway, that was all medium-high need. Is that going to be changed with the draft plan like Lindsay was talking about? Because Eastlake Simamish Trail is identified as the amenity.
So the projects that we're considering for Eastlake Simamish Parkway are actually crossings across the parkway to be able to access the trail in different locations. So that was the intent there. So still looking at the exact locations and where we prioritize those first, but that was why some of that need was showing.
Amazing. That leads to my next question. I know when I got on the Parks Commission in 2015, one of the biggest voices in the community was east-west connections down the Eastlake Simamish Trail. You know, it's 2025, I still feel like one of the biggest needs in our community is east-west connections down to the trail. So I don't know if there's a way to capture that in the framework to make sure that this, you know, even if it's not otherwise reflected, that is an amenity that we're really looking to connect. You know, it's a like $50 million park project that we didn't have to pay for. That is amazing. And I would like to, especially as light rail opens, I'd like to make sure we make it as easy and as feasible for our residents to connect to that. I know when I use that, I go down into Issaquah, along Issaquah Falls City Road, and then up. Even if I want to go up, I go down first because there's not really a great way to get to the trail. So I really want to make sure that that is highlighted as a priority of where we know we need connections. Oh, this, everyone loves when I say this, bike racks in parks, please. I understand that there's a process, I think this is also brought up at the Sustainability Commission meeting, there's a process that we need to go through, but I really think it's important that we build those facilities. I know we've made progress. I think also all of the parks on the south side of the city were identified as ones where we still don't have the racks, which is where I live, which is great. And maybe there's a way to tie in to the art strategic plan where there was talk of functional art. We can make, you know, I've seen a lot of cities, I think Vancouver, Washington has some really cool ones, Redmond has some, where it looks interesting, but it's also functional, you can lock your bike to it. Anything else? All right, looks like that's all I have. I'm sure I will have emails incoming. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Farrell.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you so much for all your work on this. First thing I just wanted to say is thank you so much for calling out the e-bikes, e-scooters, and putting that out there. It's something I hear a lot from residents, especially this time of the year, we see a lot of our more junior members out on their newly purchased e-bikes and they're all over town on them. So, and I think they're really worth calling out on this plan and getting some rules around that. I talked to Chief Lysat about it, so I'm really happy to hear. We're going to have a presentation from Simamish Police in the coming weeks on that, this issue, so that's, I look forward to that. So thank you for calling that out. Congratulations on all the public feedback. That is terrific. So obviously, we can tell that this is something that our residents really care quite a bit about. And then my only question or my only observation, I live very close to Discovery Elementary and that crosswalk from Audubon over to Discovery Elementary, when you cross Southeast 24th, there is usually, you know, a rectangular sign that says, you know, please stop children crossing, you know, it's kind of in the middle of the road. And currently, it doesn't exist anymore. It's been run over by various vehicles so many times that I'd say the city are tired of replacing it. I in fact witnessed, you know, somebody drive their four-by-four Jeep over the sign as they were heading, you know, they just thought it was a lot of fun to do that. So I think maybe those kinds of signage, I don't know if there's a different or a better sign, but it's constantly being used as a target to see who can knock it down the quickest. So that sign's vital, but it obviously needs a rethink on what should be there. So thank you so much. I look forward to this plan being adopted and becoming a reality, and it's been a long time coming, so thank you so much.
Councilmember Lamb. Deputy Mayor Lamb.
It's fine. Thank you. I think David Pyle has talked to all of us about connecting cul-de-sacs. He must be really excited about it. I agree. I think it would be great and to, you know, get the easements if we could. I was also glad to see that some of the sidewalks could be shared paths as a way to decrease costs. Are we thinking about like another level below that, like such as gravel paths where it works? Or is it strictly shared paths?
We've had those conversations and we're still looking into requirements as far as ADA accessibility goes and potential issues with gravel paths, where we're making it part of our transportation network rather than a recreation, more of a recreation-type facility. So I don't have an answer to that yet, but we are still looking into it.
Okay. I guess that kind of leads me to my next question, like looking at Snake Hill, for instance, it's a high-stress area. I don't know if sidewalks would work, but there's a great opportunity for a trail. And I think I've talked to Anjali about that. And again, you know, it's connectivity, it's getting people down to the trail. So I don't know where all that fits in because we're talking about sidewalks, we're talking about connectivity, and it kind of connects to parks as well. So probably some clarification would probably help. And my last comment had to do with the electric motorized foot scooters in your chart. It'd probably be really helpful to have some images. I actually don't know what a electric motorized foot scooter looks like. Is that like one of the razors that you stand up? I know there's a lot of people talking about the e-motocycles as well, and I didn't see that in the list. I just think that any way to simplify that and to make it more understandable, I've been looking at how other cities have their webpages for e-bikes, and some of them are a lot easier to understand. And I know I've talked to our city manager about this as well, so I'm glad that the staff is working on improving the communication on that. But I definitely think images would help.
Thank you. That's great.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trean.
Thank you, Mayor Howe. First question is...
You're kind of quiet, and I don't know if there's a way to be louder.
Hello, hello. I can be louder, how's that?
Just, yeah, do that.
So, first question is, did we, anything, any consideration on wildlife corridors doubling as soft surface trails?
We're still looking at soft surface trails in general as a potential option. We understand it would, in generally are a little bit less expensive to implement, but we, when it's in the right way, there's a lot of other regulations that we also need to look at, like ADA compliance too. So I don't believe we're looking at wildlife corridors with this plan.
Okay, I think we should do that then because I think one of the suggestions was to come down Snake Hill Road or connectivity east and west. to come down Snake Hill Road or connectivity east and west. And if you follow the wildlife corridors and our streams and the buffers that we have, it would literally make connectivity on soft trails available and maybe to the public. So I'd like to have us take a look at that. The second thing, question I have, this kind of leans into where Councilmember Gupta was headed, and I agree with him, that like, let's take a look at some of the quick successes, in a sense, through kind of an inexpensive way to do something. And so the first one I was thinking about is along East Lake Samamish Parkway to re-stripe it and turn the shoulders into bike trails. And instead of having a single solid line, you just do a double white line on each side. And it's, again, one of those psychological things that Councilmember Stewart was talking about, where it's perceived that the roadway is actually narrower when it really isn't. And if we actually used reflective paint, so I guess that's the question, have we considered using reflective paint and then changing the way we're striping the road to create quick, inexpensive bike paths?
We already use high-visibility paint. King County comes and re-stripes half of our city every year. So half of the, half of the city is done in, in the odd years, and the other half is done in the even years. Whether we could look at improvements within corridors, you're suggesting we, we can. But the paint that we are having King County place is, is already the high visibility, and we, we use reflective buttons as well throughout the city.
I, okay, I don't know if I agree with that. So, sorry. But I've just looked at the white painting, and when it rains, it's not reflective because you can't see the lines. So, just saying. I believe it's a water-based paint that we've been paying for, for the last five years. So might want to just check on that piece of information, because what I understand to be what we're using and what you're saying don't match up, so.
Happy to look into it for you.
Yeah. Because, yeah. And the last question I have really is, is there any way that we can do kind of the same thing on the 244th out the backside of, of the city through those roundabouts? Is there a way to do like a systems completion down to the city limit before you get to Has that been considered? Is that something that's gonna be on the plan? Is that something on your radar?
I believe that section of 244th does show as a high need on the very draft, the raster image map that we're looking at in terms of projects. So that's something that we can consider for this plan. What will be in the plan is a longer list of projects, but we'll focus on the top 10 highest-scoring projects that will, we will prepare some cost estimates and do some concepts for, as part of the plan. But that area is showing as a higher need.
Yes. And I just think it's another one of those low-hanging fruits, in my opinion, but I'm not a traffic engineer. But I think if you look at some striping, it will also do some calming. And how, well, then the other one would be kind of maybe Councilmember Stewart, too, was headed in the right, was making a good suggestion, in my opinion, about even if it was a little bit thinking out of the box, even if I just moved the barrier to the road and then the path is on the other side, I think along 244th would be a project that kind of would give us some indication if that was a good idea to do for some, you know, it'd be less there, whereas in other places, it might be more expensive, because we'd actually be ripping stuff up and moving it versus putting down new. So I just think 244th with, with the state that it's in might be a place that you could actually take that into consideration. So I'd please ask that you would look at that as well. Thank you very much. Back to you, Mayor Howe.
Councilmember Clark. Okay. I have a couple of questions. The average daily traffic numbers, so, you know, it's interesting because we heard public comment today that clearly they're operating from different set of numbers, I think, when they, when people come up with their own estimates for average daily traffic. What are we using here in this case? What is, is it a formula that the state gives us and we use that?
The average daily traffic counts are something that we, we do each year.
You do it? Okay. So it's actually based on reality, is what you're saying? Okay. But you're doing projections out with that, so you-
We collect the count so that we have actuals that help us. It's a foundation for a variety of things, but the, the forecasting out that we do use in transportation modeling is based on a calibrated year. So for the TMP, it was a calibrated year. But we collect the data for other reasons, too. So we take a look at projects and different things, too.
And just so I understand, too, when we talk about these higher-need projects, what is the, what is the criteria for the higher need?
These are great questions. Typically, we start with, is, is there a facility gap there to begin with? We're looking at refining some of our waiting-for-the-criteria. So we did a first run and have a great map and some projects that we're looking at. We know as staff that there's some other areas that likely have the greater needs. We're looking at some of the waiting-for-this formula. So anyway, facility gap, the level of traffic stress, history of non-motorized crashes, so with a car and a pedestrian, a car and a bicyclist, and then proximity to key areas, so schools, commercial areas, parks.
Okay. And the other question I have has to do with, I had a couple of questions, actually. The, people are looking at finding ways to have traffic calming, certainly around their neighborhoods oftentimes. So did I see reduction of speed limit? Is that what I saw? I'm trying to remember the, the slide about that.
We can pull it up. I think you might be referring to the facilities, the recommendations, like you, you can reduce speeds to potentially reduce level of traffic stress, depending on what, how much, as we talked about with Sahali, how much we're looking at a reduction. There's a whole lot of other things that have to go into that. And if you reduce it greater than a certain percentile underneath the 85th percentile, then you have to look at engineering and adding some engineers, like traffic calming to actually make it happen. Otherwise, you're looking at a very large enforcement issue.
Right. And for the survey that so many people filled out, which is fabulous, by the way, we probably don't have any demographic data on that, do we?
We don't because it wasn't a survey. It was input into the map itself. We did have that question on our sign-in sheets, so we were compliant with that, but sometimes people choose not to input it.
That's, if there's a trend that you can see, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to figure out kind of what different demographics are looking for as we look at trying to make improvements. You know, are we, are we able to actually reach out to a variety, a strata of individuals? Are we only hitting one group a whole bunch? So that's, that's the part that I'm just trying to get a better understanding of, because I think it's, you've done a fabulous job, and I, I imagine this is different folks that have, that have answered this question, but were they 18? Were they 85? Are they talking about walking or are they talking more about biking? I'm just kind of trying, again, it's another overlay of just understanding the layers of Samamish. Who lives here and what do they like to do? What do they need and what do they want? So that's kind of where I'm just headed with that question. But I'm also really excited about the work that has been done here, and I'm looking forward to seeing how this is going to play out over time. I, I do think we're gonna have to figure out some way to work with HOAs if we're gonna get these easements through, so the kids can walk to school. And this is a bugaboo for me. That's a good word. So I'm just trying to figure out how we can, how we can incentivize organizations to want to work with us in such a way that they voluntarily say, gee, the kids walk through here anyway. That's it. Anybody? Oh, oh.
Since you said it was dead, I went to the old-fashioned way.
Yeah, good. And it just, it came alive.
Oh, it did, okay. I was going analog, so.
It's not re, I don't know.
Sorry, I, two things. One, one thing, Mayor, that you said that made me think about this, when we think about the schools, have we thought about working with like the PTSAs or the schools themselves to ask questions like, what would it take to get you to not drive your children to school anymore? Money? Candy? Wine? I don't know, what?
The project team has been working with the school districts quite closely on the school analysis and, and so that we can be able to prioritize those projects in a, in a great way that it would benefit the, the schools as well.
Yeah, but the school districts is one thing. The actual parents are the ones we really want to get to, right? Like, you know, if, like you guys said, like you're looking at a half-mile radius. And I think that that, that distance varies, right? If it's, if it's an elementary school, like, I'm probably not gonna let my second grader walk a half a mile, right? Like, I may walk them, I may not, I don't know, right? But, you know, a high school, it, it might be a bigger radius because they're older and we presume that they will look both ways before they cross the street. So, you know, just really understanding what would it take for people not to create, you know, we, we hear all the time, right, the, the real traffic problems only exist during school drop-off and let-out times because we have so many people driving. So really just trying to, to get to those people and be like, what? Is there anything?
Separate from this project specifically, just to give an example of, of how we are trying to collaborate on exactly what you're all talking about on, on our Issaquah Falls City Road. You may recall, it's, it's a flood mitigation project primarily, but Dothee Hill Road has connectivity up to the park. Endeavor Elementary School is right there, and then across is a private trail that Kohani has. So our Capitol team met with all of those individually and collaborated and incorporated as much into the design comments into that early conceptual design of what that could be and how could we connect all those three key components together.
I love that. Thank you. And then the one that I thought of all by myself without having the mayor prompt me was Southeast 8th. We've talked about that a little bit before, right? We've got the great Big Rock Park connections there. I live near there. I, I don't leave my house every day, right? I work from home. And I can tell you that in the last six months, there have been three cars that I have seen in the ditch there, two of which landed in the ditch because they were swerving to not hit a person. Because there is not only no, there's no sidewalk, there's not even a shoulder. Literally, there's the white line, and on the other side of the white line are ditches on both sides of the road. So there's, there's nothing there. And our neighbor across the street actually ended up in the ditch because there were people walking and they swerved, and they didn't realize they swerved just a little bit too far, and the van just slowly, literally rolled into, to the ditch and totaled their car. So I just, I think that that is, I mean, right there is an east-west connection to 212th, which will have our lovely Do Thompson Hill Road, which will take you down to the trail. It's also a key connection to the town center. And we have two parks, very close vicinity there, actually three, because we have Beaton Hill, Big Rock, as well as-
Ebright.
Ebright, thank you. So I just think that those are things, like, as we look around the city, like, it's great that we have all the criteria, but like, just sort of the, the going around the city and looking, being like, oh, this is one of those projects. Does it check all the boxes? Because you might not find it just by drawing, you know, circles on the map. But I just think those are areas. And we even had a com, I know at least one public comment that came in, you know, people, I will tell you, there are a lot of people that push their strollers on that road, and it freaks me out every time I see it, because there's nowhere for them to go but right in the roadway. So, and I'm sure there are other things like that around the city that I think we should look for in, in vicinity to, like you did, the schools or parks and other things. So if you could take another look at that. And that's also a street that, once you get down off that part, it's just part of the street. It's been improved because of the neighborhood there. It's very wide, and people speed through there, right? And there's often a police officer there catching everybody in the speed trap. And while that might be revenue for somebody, we really don't want people speeding, and we really don't want people to have to get tickets, right? But you almost can't help yourself because the road's like 20 feet wide. So if we could kind of build the, you know, the proper bike lanes and sidewalks and things, I think that would help on all counts. Thank you.
We are very excited to start, that's our next corridor plan, so right after Sahali.
Well, thank you. I do have one last question, as to do with hoverboards. Do we, do we need to accommodate those, too?
Those have been real. That's a great question. We can look into that.
They're hoverboards.
Hoverboard?
They're the single-wheel things. They don't actually hover. No, they don't really hover. It's not the Jetsons, no. It's-
That was Back to the Future.
Oh, sorry.
So I'm just, I'm just wondering, because they are, are they motor, I think they're motorized? I don't know how fast they can go.
Yeah, they're electric. Most of them are electric. They're the single-wheel things and stuff like that, so.
So I just wanted to kind of throw that in there.
They even have electric skateboards now, so.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking, so. You have no guardrails on that puppy either. You, you more? You have more?
Yes. Sorry, very quickly. As we're talking about regulations for e-bikes and e-scooters and everything, I just want to note that it could be helpful to coordinate with other cities to make sure that we're as close to their regulations as possible, especially if you're commuting. It can be very challenging, like, okay, this is the rules for Samamish, this is the rules for the trail, this is the rules for Redmond. I know that, you know, there, there might be some regulations that make sense in our city that might not elsewhere, but as much as possible, I think it would be great to coordinate with our neighboring jurisdictions, just to make it easier for residents. Thanks.
We're clearly very excited about all of this. And so if you don't leave, we'll just keep talking at you, so. But thank you for the work, and we're, we are excited about the project. We see the possibilities here. We think it's gonna be an improvement for everyone.
Thank you. This was great feedback. If you have more, we're, we're happy to-
Oh, don't say that.
Receive it. So go ahead and send Lindsay an email, and we would love it if council joins us on the 16th of July for the open house. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we're gonna be moving on to an ordinance adopting a new chapter of 3.01 of the Samamish Municipal Code related to the administration and collection of city-imposed taxes, providing for severability and establishing of an effective date. So we have Chris here, our finance director, to walk us through this. Thank you.
Well, thank you for promoting me to finance director. I'm actually the deputy finance director, but-
It's long overdue, Chris.
I'm not sure I wanted to promote it anyway. And thank you for the introduction of the topic. So I just have a brief few things to say about it. I don't have any PowerPoint for you, so this shouldn't take too long. So the ordinance is to establish administrative provisions for collecting city taxes. So you, there was an ordinance enacted, or to enact, the utility tax was passed in March, and we told you we'd be coming back with rules for administering the tax. And here we are. So these provisions would apply to the new utility tax and to other taxes currently in the Samamish Municipal Code for gambling and admissions, although at this time, there aren't any establishments in Samamish that are subject to these taxes. We have no, no movies and no gambling houses that we know of. Adoption of this ordinance tonight would allow us to begin communicating with the utility providers about the administrative rules. We've already sent letters to 160 potential utility providers in the city and have had no comments back. So they're aware the tax is coming, and they'll be expecting rules and provisions about how to pay. These proposed administrative rules are modeled after other cities of similar size. There are standard rules, and there is nothing out of the ordinary. The key parts of the code cover who is to file a return, the due dates, information about payments, like method of payment, late payments, over and under payments, and penalties. Also covers an appeal process and what to do if they are selling their utility or going out of business. The code section with the administrative provisions was in your packet for this evening's meeting, so do you have any questions about the provisions or the rules?
Council, do you have questions? Councilmember Trean, I know you had a bunch of questions, so I don't know if you got them all answered or not. Okay. Anyone else with questions? Is there somebody that would like to make a motion to, for this ordinance?
I motion to adopt ordinance 02025, or is it, yeah, 5-584, to implement, implementing administrative provisions for the collection of city of Samamish taxes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you want to speak to your motion? Do you want to speak to your motion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you for coming, Chris. I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
So we're now to council reports and the city manager report. City Manager, would you like to kick us off?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick items to update you on. It appears that on East Sahali Way road closure, King County hit a little bit of a snag, and they have to extend by a day, so through Thursday. So it's unfortunate, but hopefully they will get it all done. If by some chance they are not done by the third, they will plate the road, and it will be open for the fourth. So hopefully they get that cleared up as soon as possible. On more positive news, our Tree City signs went up today at city borders, and there's a plaque installed in the lobby identifying us as a Tree City. So very excited about that. And, and most importantly, this week on Friday is the 4th of July. It is our Fourth on the Plateau. We're very excited to have the community come out and join us. Because it is on a Friday night this year, we expect fairly large crowds, so we would encourage people to plan accordingly, and please take your time. Also noted, because it is a holiday, City Hall will be closed that day. Obviously, the event will be going on here on the plaza, but city will not be open for business that day. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Other reports? Councilmember Gupta.
I have a PIC meeting next week, and I did send out a letter. That PIC is putting together to take a position on King County Transportation District proposed increased sales tax. So they're requesting feedback. I think the deadline is tomorrow. I did get, hear back from some of you, but if you have a position, if you have feedback, please let me know as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
I have another question around PIC meeting. Are you seeing absenteeism at PIC?
So as far, as long as I've been on PIC, I don't think we've failed to reach a quorum, but there are cities that don't show, there are cities that don't show up a lot of the time.
Okay, all right. I know that SCA is trying to address it.
I did see that on the draft agenda, is addressing those rules.
Right. Oh, gosh, okay. Knew you'd have to yell at me at some point. Okay, Councilmember Trine, please.
I was going to say something a minute here. Friday, the 11th, ETP meeting next week. So we'll be there. That's it.
And then, Councilmember Gupta and I went to the AWC conference last week, which was actually really good, and it's something you just wish that everybody could go to, and you kind of wish it could be three people, so that you could go to all the different sessions, because there was so much going on. So I think it behooves us, Councilmember Gupta, for us to write up a short report of what, you know, some of the sessions, of what we learned. And we certainly have access to the slides, and a bare minimum, the slides could prove, I think, useful, because you're going to find a topic that you care about that's going to be covered there. So we'll, we'll try to get that put together. If there's no other business to come before, Counsel.
Mayor, just one quick thing I forgot. I apologize. I want to remind everyone that National Night Out is coming up, and believe it or not, it is a month away. It is Tuesday, July 5th. I'd like to encourage any neighborhoods that want to-
Did you say July 5th?
August, sorry. I was looking at July, August 5th, pardon me. And we encourage any neighborhoods that would like to have city staff, elected officials, fire and police will be out visiting those that register. So please go on to our website and register for that, and then we'd love to show up and join you for a few minutes at your neighborhood picnic. So, thank you, Mayor.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.